I changed things around a little bit today. So it's 5:15. This is our regular scheduled meeting. The first thing we're going to do is pledge allegiance, and we're going to do it with the Girl Scouts. So I know we have somebody that's going to lead us, but maybe all, everybody can, all the Girl Scouts come up here, get recognized. And who do we have leading us tonight? And your name?
Ally.
Ally, okay. There's our flag for us. If you'd lead us, that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you, Ally, right? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to do a, first thing we're going to do, oh, we got to excuse any council members here. These are all the city council people here. And it looks like there's one empty seat, but we have them on their, on their phone. So we don't even have to have anything. We got everybody here. So that's wonderful. So now we're going to have a presentation, proclamation from the Girl Scouts. And Councilmember Uwer, would you read that into our official record for the city, please?
I'd be honored to. Thank you. Proclamation, 2024 International Day of the Girl. Whereas the International Day of the Girl, observed annually on October 11th, serves as a global recognition of the rights and potential of girls around the world. Whereas, the theme for 2024 is Girls' Vision for the Future, and emphasizes empowering girls through leadership, education, and community engagement. Whereas, Girl Scouts has a longstanding commitment to fostering courage, confidence, and character in girls, equipping them with the skills they need to lead in their communities and beyond. Whereas, girls around the world continue to face barriers to education, healthcare, and social equality, and it is our duty to advocate for their rights and opportunities. Whereas, investing in girls not only transforms their lives, but also positively impacts families, communities, and societies as a whole. Now, therefore, I, Mike Poyer, Mayor of the City of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim October 11th, 2024, as International Day of the Girl in Wenatchee. And I call upon all citizens to support the empowerment of girls, recognize their contributions, and advocate for policies that promote their well-being and success. Let us celebrate the potential of girls everywhere, and commit ourselves to creating a world where every girl can thrive. In witness whereof, I have caused the seal of the City of Wenatchee to be affixed on this 10th day of October, 2024. Mike Poyer, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Uwer. So this is a, obviously, it's a special time. I believe it's tomorrow is the official day. And would you like to tell us a little bit about what's going on in the future? That'd be great.
Sure.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Thank you, citizens. I, I just, this is wonderful. So I do a weekly email, and whenever I talk about Wenatchee, I like alliteration, so I say, wonderful Wenatchee. You indeed are wonderful. Thank you for this. I wasn't expecting the proclamation. Thank you, Tammy, for helping set this up. So my name is Brian. I'm here with my chief operating officer, Renee. We're from Spokane, where our headquarters are, but we're out here to celebrate these Girl Scouts. And Girl Scouts, tomorrow, as the mayor said, is the Day of the Girl. That was established 12 years ago by the United Nations, and it's simply a day to say that your voice matters. Look here, girls, all these citizens. We have a city council member reading a proclamation, a mayor taking time out of a city council meeting to say that you matter. So you matter, and we want to hear your voice. So thank you for doing that. Just a quick update on your Girl Scouts. Wonderful Wenatchee. You're supporting us in so many awesome ways. We hit, just a week ago, 4,307 Girl Scouts, the most we've had since, not here, all here in Wenatchee. I got Eastern Washington, but still, it's a lot. We hit that, and it's the most we've had since 2013. And as for all of you understanding, membership organizations are under siege. It's just incredible things going on right now. But we hit that great number here. We have had so many awards out here. You have some of the top cookie sellers in our council, out in Wenatchee here, on that part. And we're going to hand some cookies out to you. Those smores are going to go extinct, so we brought some smores for you, but they will be out there in force next year. But I just want to say one last thing about cookies. You all donated over 39,000 boxes of cookies to our US military, and we just sent some over to a submarine in Bremerton, US Henry Jackson. Isn't that cool to send cookies all over this world for our, for our troops out there? And many of your citizens donated them. So God bless Wenatchee for what you do. Last thing on cookies, because these wonderful Wenatchee Girl Scouts are so awesome, they're going to be $5 a box next year. We haven't raised prices since 2016, and that's because these Girl Scouts are the best entrepreneurs in America. So thank you, Mayor, for honoring them. Girls, tomorrow is your day, and this mayor just said that. God bless you, Wenatchee. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. We're going to get a, we're going to get a picture together, and then if you guys will bring, oh, the Girl Scout Promise, yeah.
We'll get them together for the picture.
Yeah, let's get it together for the picture.
Squish together real quick. There we go, there we go. We're looking this way. Brian, there we go. Brian wants to be in the picture, too.
You guys also like them, just like, just the girls, just the primary girls. And then you guys go in.
All right, who wants to, listen, we're going to get with Glenn here. So we're going to do the, what is this called?
Girl Scout Promise.
Girl Scout Promise. And I'm going to have you do the Girl Scout Promise, because we got you official City of Wenatchee. And we don't give those out, we only give that out to people that recognize they'll be kind and caring throughout their whole life. That's the only reason we do that. And we know that's what you're going to, we honor that.
All right, let's do this.
May the, may the Girl Scouts, um, raise their hand. On my honor, I will try to serve God and my country, to help people at all times, and to live by the Girl Scout law.
Thank you, girls. You mentioned, oh, look at everybody standing up.
Great job.
That's all the standing up, girls. All right, handing out cookies for thanking for their standing up. We do appreciate it, Mayor. I'm going to give this to Tammy. It's a sun catcher for on my honor. Wenatchee just gives honor to our community and our state. Thank you so much for all that you did.
Thank you very much.
Special delivery, thank you.
Best council meeting ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Leave one on the mayor's desk.
So much.
Top sure winner.
Girls, it's great.
Give the mayor one.
Oh, the mayor needs some.
You like the mince, man?
Give him three.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You guys have a great weekend. Thank you for coming.
They've got to get off city business here, and they'll be here the weekend. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work, girls.
We got snacks tonight.
Can we get cookies at every council meeting? That's great.
Can we invite them every week?
Right.
Give them, give them a minute to leave here. All right, now we'll go on, and this is the time for citizens' comments. It's a period to provide the opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any matter, including items on the agenda. Comments on the public hearing item will be taken during a public hearing. I'll first ask if there are any citizens wishing to address the council. When recognized, please step up and give your name and address. We are going to limit it to three minutes, and we have a timer to my left or to your right when you come up. So who do we have first that would like to come up and have a, three minutes of a public comment?
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Joshua James. I live at 614 Okanagan Avenue. Residents of Wenatchee should feel safe, secure, and be able to engage in quiet enjoyment in the privacy of their permanent places of dwelling. But we and many of our neighbors on Okanagan Avenue no longer do, as a result of the new proposal by the City of Wenatchee and activities at or near 609 Okanagan Avenue. This is not a partisan issue. This is about safety, health, and quality of life, in addition to other concerns such as nuisances and financial issues in which we have documented and submitted for review. For example, since this February of 2024, we have documented over 850 public demonstrators directly adjacent to our homes, and in effect targeted residential picketing, and over 2,800 noise nuisances, often occurring 12 or more hours per day, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in our residential neighborhood. Despite social-political differences, all that we've reached, we've reached out to for consultation, including family, friends, colleagues, and many local Wenatchee community members, have unanimously agreed they would not want to be subject to these concerns, and this is an inappropriate location for these activities. And we agree. So then why should those residents on Okanagan Avenue be any different? I am a local emergency responder, and my wife is a veteran who's actively served in the US military. We have served and responded to our country and to our local community, and we have a reasonable expectation our local government will serve and respond to us. Yet after more than eight months of contacting the City of Wenatchee, we have received responses that have attempted to minimize or transfer our concerns, with exception of a council member, Wavas, who has contacted and engaged us in communication. We do appreciate that. So thank you, Councilmember Wavas. But we have yet to be informed of any action taken to address these concerns. Rather, we have been instructed by the City of Wenatchee to report our concerns and contact the Wenatchee Police Department, who are unable to address or resolve the multitude of these concerns. The Police Department has in turn directed us back to the City of Wenatchee and the City Council. So based on that direction, that is what we are going to do. We will continue to report these almost daily concerns to the Wenatchee Police Department, in addition to our City Councilmember in the City of We don't want to be here. We don't want to be involved in this. We don't. But we will, not only for ourselves, but also for our local community members on Okanagan Avenue, who may not be able to. We ask that you serve us and serve those residents on Okanagan Avenue, and respond to us. And we are asking the City of Wenatchee find a resolution to this. Thank you.
Hello. Mayor and City Council, my name is Constance Zahar. I live on 6-Mupore, Okanagan Ave. The presence of the facility has greatly increased our stress and has diminished much of the enjoyment of our quiet home. I'm afraid to walk out my front door with a constant reminder of the socio-political weight of such a facility right in front of our nose. I've worked hard to earn my way, serving in the military, serving in two Middle Eastern deployments. I did not make it through the hard, unsafe times to be subject to risk, transfer, and feel unsafe in my own home. I did not work hard, save, pinch, and invest to lose value and face the possibility of no one wanting to buy our home because of the facility and activities right in front of our nose. We ask that you please close review our letter to assist in mitigating this issue. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none. We'll go to our consent items.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meetings. Motion for the City Council to accept the work performed by the contractor selling construction on city project number 2410, Fifth Street and Emerson, emergency stormwater main replacement, and authorize city administrators to sign the final contract voucher. Also, motion for the City Council to approve amendment number one to the city, oh, to the Wenatchee Valley Decant Facility use agreement with Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County, and authorize city administrator to sign, yeah, to sign. Motion for City Council to accept the work completed by contractor Pipkin, Inc., for the site and utility work at 1450 South Wenatchee Avenue, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract vouchers on behalf of the City of Wenatchee.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby, and second by Councilmember Uwer, to approve agenda vouchers and minutes from previous meeting. Motion for City Council to accept the work performed by the contractor selling construction on city project number 2410, Fifth and Emerson, emergency stormwater mainline replacement, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher. Also, the motion for the City Council to approve amendment number one to the Wenatchee Valley Decant Facility Use Agreement with Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County, and authorize the city administrator's signature. Also, motion for the City Council to accept the work completed by the contractor Pipkin, Incorporated, for the site and utility work at 1450 South Wenatchee Avenue, and authorize the city administrator to sign the final contract voucher on behalf of the City of Wenatchee. Any discussion or comments?
Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. How are you this evening?
Good, thanks. How about you?
Wasn't it fun with the Girl Scouts?
Absolutely. They're adorable. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. And this evening, I'm requesting a motion to authorize the city administrator to sign a termination of permit with the Shalane PUD for the Home Water Property. So if you're unaware, the Home Water Property is that big square in the middle of your screen up there. This is Kenzie's Landing, Broadview Neighborhood's up in this area. And then down below are our properties that make up the Sage Hills Gateway. So it's right in between. So Home Water Property, PUD operates it for habitat purposes up there. 2007, the city entered into a use permit for trail work up in that area. The land trust wanted to do some work up there and maintain, manage the trails, and open it up for outdoor recreation. But at that time, the PUD was, didn't really want to, they had a policy, I guess, at that time to not contract with third parties. They only wanted to contract with other municipal organizations, cities, et cetera. So the city entered into that agreement with them, and then subsequently did a sub-agreement with the land trust to operate and maintain it. So basically, the PUD is now ready to move on and contract directly with the land trust, or have a permit directly with the land trust. So it gets this, termination of this agreement, then gets us out of the middle of that. So staff recommends approval, and would take any questions you might have.
So like the telephone tree, we're not in the middle anymore. Might not, that way, they can connect directly.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Yep.
Nice.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator to sign the termination of permit with the Shalane PUD for the Home Water Property.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Huffaker, and second by Councilmember Atkins, for City Council authorized city administrator to sign the termination of permit with the Shalane PUD for the Home Water Property. Any comments or discussion?
Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so now our next item is a motion for the City Council to approve the project agreement for a balsam root fire restoration area. So moving a little bit further north from that previous map, you can see the Home Water Preserve here, oops, got it out of the way, outlined. And then also, city properties, this is Kenzie's Landing, right up in this area. And then our Foothills North property is up above. Land Trust owns the Horse Lake Properties, which are outlined in green there. And then this is private property on the other side. Horse Lake Road comes kind of right up this way. The blue area, July 4th of this year, there was a wildfire up there, started by fireworks, and burned all of that blue area, as well as the yellow area. The black dashed line is a bulldozer fire line that was created up there. So this agreement that we've been working on with the DNR, the WDFW, which is Fish and Wildlife Department, the Land Trust, BFI, which is a native seeds company, the PUD, Cascadia Conservation District, the Mule Deer Association, and the Fire District, have been working on an agreement for restoration of this area up here. It's a couple of phases. First phase, actually, if this is approved, would be tomorrow, or sorry, next week, seeding of the areas, as well as applying some herbicide up there to help with the noxious weed control. And then following up again next year with additional seeding. I really need to mention Jennifer Hattersberger with the Land Trust. She spearheaded this, this whole project. We've been working since the end of July to get this done, and did a wonderful job getting this, all these people together, and getting it to the point that we can actually do this restoration work. And I also have to thank our city attorney for also really helping us scramble for the last couple of weeks to get this agreement all hammered out. So it's a great deal for the city, a good thing for the property up there. And try to answer any questions you might have.
Dave, is this similar to what we did after the last major fire we had up in that area?
It's a little, it's a little similar. We had less partners in that one, but yeah. So this particular case, we're overseeding and restoring the fire lines. That time, we had to hydroseed everything. This will be more in the terms of aerial seeding using drones, some ground seeding, and some plugs up there. So the species of seeds that we're using, also, we're working with the Fire District to identify seeds that help slow the growth of wildfires. So in these areas, then, when the next one comes, because there will be another one, when it comes in, hopefully then these new grasses will be established to help slow the progress of it as it nears the neighborhood up there.
Just a comment. Well done on working with everybody and getting this over the, over the fence of making it happen this year. Timing's important for seeds laying down. So with that, I'll make a motion for the City Council to approve the project agreement for balsam root fire restoration with the Shalane Douglas Land Trust, and authorize the administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby, and second by Councilmember Huffaker, for City Council to approve the project agreement for the balsam root fire restoration with the Shalane Douglas Land Trust, and authorize the city administrator's signature. Any other comments or discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, good evening. Elizabeth Rossiter, IT Director, I'm here today for a motion, with the motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator to enter into a three-year ESRI agreement with a 2024 budget impact of $44,499.20, including tax and approved annual payments over the term. The total cost of the agreement, $133,497.60, requires council approval, so that is why I'm here today. This is to maintain existing technology services, and this is appropriately budgeted in 2020.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but this is just continuing with an agreement we already have. It's just the next phase of it. So it's not the full impact of that amount. It's just, there's a slight increase to cover inflation and so on.
Right, right. It's about a six and a half percent increase over what we saw last year. We do these agreements in three-year terms to help stabilize the cost, to make that predictable. So ESRI is the city's GIS mapping data software, and it is foundational to everything we do around mapping. It's related to actually recording and creating addresses for the city. It has to do with providing data about the city to public safety and to 911 dispatch. It's also essential to asset management. So all the roads, signs, bollards, sidewalks, all of that is inventoried within GIS, and of course, around emergency and disaster prep, and a number of other items.
So the six and a half percent increase, then, there was a three-year contract, so then it increases next year, the following two years? Same thing, six and a half percent?
Correct. It'll be $44,499. each year over the term. So we know it will stay stable for the next three years.
I got lost. So is the amount going to stay the same for the three years, or is it going to be a six and a half percent increase the following, next year?
It's a six and a half percent increase over what we paid in our last agreement.
But this is locked in then for three years?
This is locked in, absolutely.
Okay, that's, that's where I, okay, sorry.
Yes. This ensures consistent pricing, and this is negotiated under a Washington State contract. So cities don't negotiate with ESRI directly. The state goes in and negotiates these kind of agreements from municipalities to get us the best price. So this is what we're able to get, and it's probably the best price that we're going to be able to get. And again, it is appropriately budgeted. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for City Council to authorize the city administrator to enter into a three-year ESRI, did I say that right? ESRI agreement with a 2024 budget impact of $44,499.20, including tax, and approved annual payments over the term.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Uwer, and second by Councilmember Hornby, for City Council authorized city administrator to enter into a three-year ESRI agreement with 2024 budget impact of $44,499.20, including tax, and approved annual payments over the term. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another item for you, and this is a motion for the City Council to approve the purchase of a new backup infrastructure and the first year of software licensing in the amount of $102,000, or $202,039.83. The 2024 budget impact does, is at the level that it requires council approvals. That is why I'm here today with you. This is to improve existing technology services, and it is appropriately budgeted using 2024 IT reserves. The impact of this means we'll have to build our reserves up over the next couple of years, but we do have that funding in IT. It was just not a planned upgrade. What we're proposing is a hybrid approach to backups. Currently, the city is using a completely on-premise system, which means our backups reside within our networks. We would really like to shore that up, modernize, and expand that to keep up with the growth that we've seen over the last few years. So a few things this is going to provide for us is disaster planning. So it's going to give us about a bit of cloud-based storage, so that our backups are here, but they're also stored elsewhere in the event that we have a regional event. And the system we're buying is going to provide us faster backup and restore times than what we've been doing historically. It's also going to help us improve security with a really uncommon operating system that is challenging for anyone to hack into. We have isolated backup storage, and it also gives us cloud backup management, which provides an added level of isolation for that. And then, of course, improved data integrity. It gives us sufficient growth planning over the next six years. We anticipate that we're purchasing enough storage to carry us through the next six years. And it also has anomaly detection. So if something is rapidly or massively deleted, we're going to know about it immediately. And one-time costs, the expenditure this year is a little over $202,000. And again, we'll spend down a portion of the IT reserves. And then, of course, the consistency of the cost there with this agreement locks in our price for year two and year three. The reason the cost is so expensive this year is we do need to purchase new hardware. I'm happy to take any questions.
I guess, I'm, I'm caught off guard. You say we keep our backups onsite now, because I could have swore that we had switched to cloud backups years ago, with the idea that we knew it wasn't safe to have our backups on. So I'm, I'm caught off guard. I was thinking we had gone to cloud storage.
No, no, we are, and it's not uncommon for municipalities to function that way, but more and more are moving to try to have this hybrid approach.
Yeah. Well, I 100% agree, because then it's, it's, it's fire safe. It's not going to get destroyed. And, and so I guess my other question that I asked you earlier is, why do we need both? Why do we need both onsite and cloud-based?
It's a wonderful question. It's a challenging, it's, it's difficult to give a straightforward answer, but I'll do my best. There's a number of factors that we consider when an organization decides whether they're going to do on-premise, cloud-based, or a hybrid approach. The things we consider in that is where do all of our servers live? Where are our primary services? The second is how much data are we backing up? A municipality, as you know, we have records requirements. We do a lot of video. We do a lot of photographs, a lot of things that can't be, you know, shrunk down, if you will. that can't be, you know, shrunk down, if you will, compacted. So we have a lot of data that we're backing up. And then, of course, budget impacts and how long you need to keep that data. So in looking at our organization, most of our data, we need to be able to have access to for regular backups, regular recoveries. So we'd like to have that kind of data immediately onsite because it's faster, however, and it's more affordable. So if we buy a storage device to live here on the network, it's going to be about the same as subscribing to cloud-based storage. But cloud-based storage is unpredictable, and the cost increases on us. So I am a believer that you end up paying more for cloud storage. Secondly, we can't restore data as quickly from the cloud as we can when we have that all in-house. The reason that we've chosen to do cloud as well is so that if we have a regional event and our data here located in Wenatchee becomes unavailable, we then have a data store that we can pull in that situation.
So all of our data will still be backed up on the clouds. We still have to pay for that amount, but then we're also buying hardware to store it locally as well, just for the rapid response of need, I need it now and the internet's down?
The majority of our data will be stored in Wenatchee. We will always make sure we have one recent backup in the cloud available for disaster recovery. When we talk about backups, we have two things going on. We're making sure that we're having, we have data for historic data that we can restore. That's where the data starts to pile up, and that's what will be onsite. But we also want to make sure we always have a recent backup available in the cloud in case there's a disaster. So the amount of storage that we have onsite far exceeds what we're using in the cloud.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
I just want to mention, I appreciate all the information you shared at Finance Committee. That was very helpful and also pointed out just how crucial this is for the city. So thank you for all the thought and intent you've put behind it.
Thank you, and I apologize if my, if my, I was a little too technical in that explanation, but.
With that, I would like to make a motion for city council to approve the IVOXY Professional Installation Services Agreement for the purchase of new backup infrastructure and first year of software licensing in the amount of $102,039.83 and authorize the city's administrator's signature.
Second.
Motion by council member Uer and second by council member Ronestean for city council to approve the IVOXY Professional Installation Services Agreement for the purchase of new backup infrastructure and first year of software license in the amount of $102,039.83 and authorize city administrator's signature. Any other comments or hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Nelson, I think you're up.
Greetings, council members and mayor. Thank you for being here. I'm Donald Nelson, project engineer for our Public Works. Today before you is an action item related to a contract that we've just would like to get awarded, city project for number 2302 Worthing Street Improvements Project. This project, if you're not aware of it, is to improve the trail that from between Thurston Underpass, where the end of the PUD Park is, further south to Hale Park. And that particular section of the trail is adjacent to Worthing Street and the Columbia River, and this project will provide pedestrian lighting and trail width that's better than what we have, as well as more of a meandering route. We're requesting the motion for the city council to award the construction contract for the Worthing Street Trail Improvements Project, project number 2302, to the lowest responsible bidder, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. The bid results happened last Friday, and we found that company called KRCILLC gave us a bid amount of $345,502.50, which was under the engineer's estimate. Our estimate at one time was $368,000. We corrected an error. It was actually $371,000. However, still less than what we guessed it would to be. And the company is planning to get started in a couple of weeks and get the job done in a couple of weeks. So we're pretty excited to have this done soon. Case, our CI is also the contractor that's doing the PUD Park improvements that we're seeing some of the progress that they're doing. So we're quite happy to have them.
Can you tell us a little bit more, since we don't have a few photos of like what the plan, actual plan is, like?
I didn't bring any photos.
That's okay. But can you just explain, like, what are, what are we doing down there?
So I'm going to say, does anybody know where the park is? Okay, good. When, when you leave the park and you're heading south towards Hale Park, the trail that we walk on, ride our bike on, is covered with gravel here and there. It's relatively narrow, and it, it's a little bit off the road to start with, and then eventually it gains alongside the existing road. It's part of the road width. And as you continue south, you eventually get to the parking lot for Hale Park. This project will provide some meandering where we see some space that is towards the river from the edge of the road. We have some additional space before there's a cyclone fence, some trees, things like that. The trail will meander and get closer to the fence, provide a better separation from the driving surface, making it more comfortable for, I don't know, I like to walk and look and see things. And part of this will include some larger rock instead of the kind of sandy gravel that's out there now. It'll be the cobbley more rock and provide a better distinction between the, the edge of the road where sometimes we find cars that are parked on the other side of the trail next to the fence, and we're trying to discourage that function. So that's kind of the, and in addition to that, PUD has come up with a new light fixture. The current ones that we see out there are more of this acorn shape, and they've come up with a new shape, and they're going to change out the entire park frontage on north of us, over there. And we've found the same pattern. We actually are coordinating with them, and we're going to use the same light fixture to provide the same light levels and the same light functionality for our poles for this stretch. And this part is maintained by us rather than them.
Don, you might have already mentioned this, and the fundings from the.
The Transportation Improvement Board is a, is a fighter of this, the Complete Streets Program.
Okay, thank you.
And this was one of the projects that was identified in that, that we could maybe do.
Got it, okay.
And we always like to give kudos when the bid comes in lower than the engineer's estimate. So with that, I'll make a motion for the city council to award the construction contract for the Worthing Street Trail Improvements Project, city project 2302, to the lowest responsive bidder, that being KRCILLC, and authorize the city administrator to sign the contract documents. Second.
Motion by council member Huffaker and second by council member Hornby for city council authorize, council to award the construction contract for the Worthing Street Trail Improvement Project, city project 2302, to the lowest responsible bidder, KRCILLC, and authorize city administrator to sign the contract documents. Any other discussion or comments?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to acknowledge Donald and Jake's engineering team. They really banded together to get this project out to add. The TIB Complete Streets funding had tight timelines on that, so they had to be expended by next spring. So the fact that this project was out to add and likely going to be completed this fall is just really good news. I just want to acknowledge the team for that. So, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And sometimes we don't say it enough, but when you guys, I, I do remember this, when you group together and kind of, I'm going to call it scramble, just to make sure we get, you know, the funding that we asked for to, to continue, to make sure we don't lose that funding. It's very impressive for everybody in the team, and that, that does need to be recognized more and more often about our, how incredible our staff is. So, thank you, Donald.
Okay, so I'm going to interrupt and say thank you, too. To, so from my point of view, the project got assigned to me, and I watched coworkers join in and help get it done. And that was exciting for me, because this person does this thing really good, and that person does this thing really good, and Ryan does stuff really good. And it's like, I was panicking, and they helped him. The panic went away. Anyway, kudos to the team.
Yeah, that's cool.
Go team.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah.
City administrator, you're up.
Good evening, council. Laura Gloria, city administrator. The item before you is the Cascade Public Infrastructure Grant Interlocal Agreement. Had to make sure I got that all right, between Schland County and the city of Wenatchee. So the Schland County offers a economic development program for other municipalities. Cities, ports are the only ones that are eligible, as well as housing agencies for housing projects. So the city of Wenatchee applied for a utility project along north, along Wenatchee Avenue, near the Wyner project. A couple months ago, Wyner came and talked to you about the Streetscape project that they're looking to invest in, and so we started looking for some funds to also support the project. Applied for these dollars for $400,000 towards that, and were successful in getting that from the county. So this is the grant agreement that allows us to request reimbursement for that project once we get going. It'll more likely pay for the planning and design components, and then we will continue to work to find either additional grant dollars, or we are, as you know, looking at a TIF district in terms of helping support that fund as well to finish out this project. So with that, happy to answer any questions. But yeah, these are, these are grant dollars and from the county.
Yeah, one question, and I probably just don't understand this, but it sounded like it was like at the end, the funding would come at the end. And that's what, I was just kind of curious about that. And maybe I'm probably reading it wrong if that's not the way it is, but.
Is that a reimbursement grant?
It is a reimbursement grant, yeah. Yeah, so we would have to expend the dollars and then get paid back. It's not an upfront.
Right.
Thing.
But not at the end of the project, at the, at the end of, you could use it for the study. It doesn't have to be at the end of when the utilities are put in there.
It just goes to go towards those uses.
Once you've spent the money, then you can get it.
Yeah. And, and frankly, if that was the case, if I missed it somewhere, I can go back and double check. If that was the case, that's okay, too, right? We're going to have to figure out how to support that with the, with the utility dollars and the TIF dollars and these dollars. And so we will use it as necessary to, in a justice.
Yeah, I just, I saw it somewhere. I can't find it.
Yeah. Yeah, apologies. But it is a reimbursement grant.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the Cascade Public Infrastructure Fund Grant Interlocal Agreement between Schland County and city of Wenatchee for the Wenatchee Avenue Utilities Project and authorize the city administrator's signature.
Second.
We have a motion by council member Ronestean and second by council member Cuevas for city council approve the Cascade Public Infrastructure Fund Grant Interlocal Agreement between Schland County and city of Wenatchee for the Wenatchee Avenue Utilities Project and authorize the city administrator's signature. I will make a comment. A county commissioner came up to me today and, and just complimented our city administrator that how they weren't going to do this, and they, it's because of you, they did do this, and they actually said, come back next year. So you, you obviously left a great impression of your presentation, however you did that. So I want to give a, I don't give you too many kudos sometimes, but I want to make sure I give you one. A big shout out from.
I get plenty, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for getting us $400,000. Oh, public, oh, so public hearing.
For the transportation plan.
Oh, yeah, so I, let's see, I got to read some rules, I think.
Okay.
Right? So at this time, it's going to be the public hearing to order regarding the 2025-2030 Comprehensive Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. First, I'll ask staff, including Emma, for their presentation, followed by public comment. For those wishing to provide public comment, I request you to speak clearly into the microphone, state your name and address. All comments should be addressed to the hearing body, should be relevant to the matter, and not be of personal nature. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So as the mayor said, my name is Emma Honeycutt. I'm the Assistant City Engineer in the Public Works Department here, and I'm here tonight to present the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program. We call it the TIP. The Six-Year TIP is a legislative requirement, statutory requirement, that every agency maintains and retains a six-year transportation plan and updates it each year and adopts an ordinance thus. So this, this plan is, I included in the agenda report, both this year's update and also last year's adopted plan, to show the changes, of which there were not a ton. There's, you'll notice there's quite a bit of overlap between last year's and this year's. We did kind of update our funding phasing on certain projects from year by year, because one of the statutory requirements is that it needs to be fiscally constrained as well. So it needs to be somewhat realistic and reflective of the grants that we're going after. If you, if you kind of, if you look at the plan, it's, I think, gosh, we're up to like five pages now. We had our capital group submit 22 grant applications this past year, so all of those are reflected on the plan. And then also current capital projects that are still spending money, any project with federal funds or state funds. There's also a few recurring items on the plan, which are sort of like our annual pavement investment and our annual sidewalk investments, and our current, hopefully soon, recurring annual like ADA investment for programs we're trying to build up. Those are also reflected on the plan. The, the, the last half of the plan kind of shows our unfunded needs, of which there are quite a few. It's, so there, there, there are specific capital investments that have been identified by other planning efforts in the city, such as our local road safety plan, reimagine Wenatchee effort, identified some needs in the city, the South Wenatchee Avenue Plan and the North Wenatchee Avenue Plan and all the plans. This is just, this is a reflection of those planning efforts and a, based on just like a capital program, capital project outbreak. The other thing just kind of to note is that the, we also have a Transportation Impact District in the foothills for development in the foothills, and those funds are specifically allotted to a certain number of projects that were identified when we came up with those fees, and those are also shown on the plan. We have, we were able to knock out a couple of those projects, so those fell off from last year. But the ones that are remaining are still on there. Yeah, and I guess the, the only other thing I'll note, just plug, is that we're rounding third on a citywide pedestrian improvement plan that hopefully, that will enable us to prioritize sidewalks and pedestrian improvements moving forward, and those will start to show up in the future plans as well, so that we're not playing, you know, whack-a-mole quite as much. So I would be happy to entertain any questions or comments or pets on the back.
Yeah, Emma, is this the one that we looked at in one of the committees and had this big chart and had everything and the dates laid out?
Yes.
Yeah, we all took, well, not all of us, but I, whatever committee we were on that day, and we took it all home and checked it out. It was pretty, it was pretty cool. I actually have that on my kitchen counter. I look at it every day. It was really a, I, I, well, it was really interesting, to be honest with you, to see that thought process all the way out. So.
Yep.
Anyway, I, I got excited about it.
Big spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Just because I'm curious, number six, North Wenatchee Avenue Shared Use Trail. Just because I'm curious, number six, North Wenatchee Avenue Shared Use Trail Phase One between Maiden Lane and Walnut. Is that, I mean, there's, is there sidewalk there right now, or?
So, there is sidewalk on Maiden Lane. This project, it's funded, we have grant funding for it already, and it's gonna be a bike and ped trail up on the old irrigation ditch. So, in between kind of like Easys and Home Depot and back there, we're gonna put some pavement down and grade it out, and then bring it back down to Maiden Lane at the north end.
Okay, great. Any other staff for this, Emma? Is this set for that, so now?
Public comment, I think.
Public comment, thank you. I need all the help I can get tonight. Uh, public comment?
There's a big crowd tonight.
Hmm, I wish the girls, the Girl Scouts was here, we could get them to say something. Seeing no public comment.
No takers?
Takers? Let's see, go back to the City Council for any action they wish to, to complete.
I'll make a motion to, let's see, as soon as I find it there. For the City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-23, adopting the 2025 to 2030 Comprehensive Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, and directing the same to be filed with the Washington State Secretary of Transportation.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Atkinson, and second by Councilmember Horn B. For City Council to adopt ordinance number 2024-23, adopting the 2025-2030 Comprehensive Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program, and direct, directing the same to be filed with the Washington State Secretary of Transportation. Any other discussion or comments?
Just nice work, Emma, I know, at some level, this was looking at paint drying, because you looked at it for so long, but you kept focused and very detailed in everything you put into it, thanks.
Any other comments? Hearing then, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? Motion carries. Presentation for the 2025 Preliminary Budget.
Here comes the fun part.
I definitely liked Emma's, all her numbers, I'm not sure how I'm gonna enjoy this.
I'm sure, I was gonna ask you, when the last time you had the budget, the city's budget out on your kitchen counter? But, joking aside, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Brad Pose and Jack, Finance Director. And at this point of our budget process, I like to come and just give you a quick overview of what the departments and the mayor and the Finance Committee have been working on to prepare the 2025 budget. Something's out of order here. Maybe not, maybe I just have extra clicks on here. So, as part of the twenty, as part of the budget process, a lot of this is set by state statute, and some of it is our own internal timelines we have. What we do typically in July, the Finance Department will begin the process, projecting salaries, benefits, then next year's revenues, then in August and September, we work with the different department directors and the mayor to compile kind of the baseline for the 2025 budget. Then, just a couple weeks ago, a few weeks ago, September 24th, the Finance Committee met and reviewed several different additions to the 2025 budget, as well as provided feedback on several budget requests. And then those, the, kind of sat down with the mayor and City Administrator, looking at those budget requests, and incorporated most of them into the preliminary budget, I should say, the proposed preliminary budget. Per RCW, the terminology at this point in time is the proposed preliminary budget. We have to get that out to council and make that available to the public by October 1st, and that budget is in the council packet tonight, that hopefully you got to see. The actual preliminary budget has to be out by November 1st, and so in a few weeks, you'll, you'll see that, or a couple weeks, you'll see that. And so, at this point in the ti, point in the budget process, we've got most of the budget pretty well worked out. I am, there are gonna be a couple minor changes between now and the preliminary budget that comes out on November 1st, but they really won't impact this too much from the numbers you're seeing. So, what, what we often look at, we talk about the general fund the most. The general fund, it is where we receipt most of our, our general revenues that we can use for any purpose of city government. We have thirty-six other funds besides the general fund, and they have very specific uses, and we don't tend to focus on them as much. We do review them, some at Finance Committee, and happy to answer questions, but a lot of them are sort of self-sustaining funds that, that don't require quite the level of, of a discussion with council. So, one thing that you'll, that we've kind of been experiencing, that you've all heard, is our economic slowdown. That's been happening, I think, worldwide, if not nationwide and local. So, I won't sugarcoat it, that the 2025 budget process has been much tighter than any of the other years, at least that I've been here in the last seven years. So, it has been a tighter budget process, but I, the, the city staff and Finance Committee has worked very well to try to, try to manage this. And we are still looking at, at least what I'm hearing, is people are talking about a slowdown. Not sure whether it's, they're gonna dub it a recession or not, but definitely kind of a soft landing after some years of growth. One of the things you'll notice is in the general fund, the 2025 budget, both our revenues and expenses, we only show roughly a two percent increase in both of those. And with the net income, at this point in time, shows up as a negative, almost million dollars. One of the things with the budget versus our actual, is that when we budget, we are typically conservative on our revenues, and almost always, we end up beating our revenues, oftentimes by about a million dollars. On our expenses, that is our legal limit, we can't spend more than that. And so typically, we end up spending ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of that, which ends up being about a million under that. Because things have slowed down, I don't know that we will end up with a two million dollar difference on this budget in 2025, but it should end up breaking even, just like the 2024 budget. We did go into it budgeting for about a million dollar spend down, just kind of on paper, is what, what that is. And tracking our revenues, yes, our sales tax slowed down, but our actual, our building permits and our utility tax and our interest revenues, those have all been performing well, and have kind of helped, helped balance that out. So, we still will probably end up breaking even in 2024, even with the slowdown that's happened. So, I do expect that to happen the same in 2025. So, this million dollar out of balance, what it looks like, that's about where I'm comfortable with, with council adopting a budget, with the budgets out of balance, but the actual is most likely to come in, to come into balance. We often talk about the recurring budget versus the non-recurring budget, because we want to, we want to balance our recurring revenues and expenses as close as we can. And the non-recurring, typically, we will end up spending down some reserves when we have those strong reserves, and I could all get into that on a slide a little bit later. Our recurring budget, our recurring revenues are not growing as fast as they have in the past, where our recurring expenses, probably mostly because we've had a placeholder for our uncertain jail contract, that did grow quite a bit more. So, our net recurring is, is more, is a larger negative number than I'm, I usually like seeing. We usually try to balance this out pretty even, but knowing that this, that we are in the middle of a slowdown, and that this slowdown won't last forever, I'm comfortable with that. And, and should, again, it should end up balancing out when the actuals play out. Twenty twenty-five probably is not gonna be a year we're adding to our fund balance, to our reserve, as we have in many years before, but at this point, we're, we're just, we've, everybody's kind of holding back, and we've slowed down a little bit so that we'll be able to weather this slowdown fairly, fairly safely. We do have a large reserve, and so, there's, there's really no concern, we just have to tighten things up a little bit. Our non-recurring, this is, most of our non-recurring revenues come from our sales tax that we track. So, we track when there are large projects that generate a significant amount of sales tax. We don't want to expect that year after year, so when there's big construction projects, we can identify those in our sales tax revenue. So, a lot of that million dollar revenue is the one-time sales tax. Other portions of that one-time revenue are grants. We've got a couple different grants that I'll briefly mention in a second. But then our non-recurring expenses, as you can see, in 2023, our non-recurring expenses were very large. We have grown significant reserves, and so we use those to perform several different projects that ended up spending down some of, spent down some of our reserves. But last year, we just started to feel a little bit of that slowdown, and so we made sure we didn't, we didn't authorize the same level of reserves, or same level of one-time expenses that we had in the past few years. And, again, yeah, and then, again, we're just gonna continue slowing those down a little bit more this year as we're looking at the 2025 budget. What makes up that one point five million in one-time requests on the general fund are these following items. You would have received this, these, a full list of all the one-time requests, general fund and on other funds. You would have received that in an email from me a couple weeks ago. But these are the ones that impact the general fund, and I should note that two of these, the Energy Efficiency Block Grant and the GMA Updates, those both have grant revenue associated with those. So, of that one point five million, some of that is coming back to us in revenue, on the revenue side. But the greatest, the largest item on this is the million dollar commitment to the museum facility upgrades. We've committed two million, and so we're trans, we're setting aside a million in 2024 and a million in 2025. So, those are very few in compare, comparison to what we normally have seen as far as our general fund one-time requests. In your budget packet, we've got the preliminary budget, and I break it down by department and by different funds. And typically, if you see a department or a fund that's increasing by five percent or less, that's pretty typical of some of the cost of livings. So, what I do, I end up going through it, and I look at the departments that have larger percentages, that's what my eye gets drawn to. And so, I figured I'd, I'd kind of focus on a few of those. The first one that I come to is the budget grouping that we call Defender Court in Jail. And in that one, we pay for our, we budget for our district court contract, public defender contract, our Rivercom assessment, and our jail contract. The jail contract expires this year, and we began, we've begun discussions, and there is still uncertainty as to what our jail costs will be for 2025. The county initially asked for sixty-four percent increase, and we did not quite budget a sixty-four percent increase, but we did build a big, a big increase into that, which makes up the majority of that seventeen point two percent increase to that Department thirteen. Also, Parks and Recreation, theirs wasn't up a ton, the six point eight percent. Most of that is related to, this, middle of this year, we added the ecology crew, the temporary staff for the ecology crew of the parks, and so that is now bumping up in the 2025 budget. So, that's the largest increase in salary and benefits. And then, under the Supplies and Services category, they have experienced large utility cost increases that, and I think there's other things like pool chemicals, they're just, the cost of those have gone up, and so, there are some big, big bumps in that as well. Continuing down a little further on the document, there's this Other Administration Department, and that budget includes several contracts and other, other commitments that don't fit into another specific department. The main increases in the other administration are due to much higher insurance pool premiums that we have to pay, and increased property tax transfer to support the Street Maintenance Fund, that has also seen significant cost increases. Then, the non-recurring expenses, this one is actually a large negative number, and again, that is because we pulled way back on the amount that we were authorizing for the one-time requests in 2025. There, as I mentioned, there are, besides the general fund, there are thirty-six other funds that we budget. And you can, we can go down through that list, I wasn't gonna go and talk about any, all of them or any of them, just to say that most of the, pretty much all of the significant changes in, in those funds are either related to interfund allocation changes, where we've got, we have certain departments that end up doing interfund billing for our facilities, for our vehicles, for that self-insurance. So, we've got a bunch of interfund allocations that change a little bit from year to year, and some funds end up getting hit bigger than other funds. And then, the main piece is the capital project budgets. Different funds, especially utilities and I think the three hundred fund, series funds, those often have wide swings in the capital projects and the grant revenues they're getting. So, those will, when you're talking five million dollars one year, and then three million dollars the next, those swings, they, those swing quite, quite large, and create big, big negatives or positives in the change column. Looking, I guess, going back to the general fund and talking about our reserve and what our outlook looks like. As you can see, that big yellow blob at the bottom, it, it shows that during 2021 and 2022, our reserve grew quite a bit. A lot of that is due to, is actually due to COVID. You might be surprised that our reserve grew quite a bit during COVID. A lot of it is thanks to some federal COVID funding that we received. And kind of in, in conjunction with that, you also saw that in 2023, we spent a lot of that, that nine million of the one-time that was on the previous slide. We used that for different projects and, and other, and other commitments. And so, it, that also, another reason why our fund balance grew during those years is some, because as, as the economy kind of came to a standstill, and some things, some projects just couldn't even get done, and you couldn't buy certain things, and so our spending actually decreased for those years more than our revenue did, and so, we were able to just grow just from the nature of not being able to do things because of COVID. So then, going forward, I think because of that slowdown, we are gonna see our, for a little, for a little bit, our, actually, our revenues should be pretty close to our expenses, but we may dip a little bit below our recommended reserve, which is fifty percent of our operating expenses. Our minimum reserve, I believe, is twenty-five percent, so we are still gonna be almost double what our minimum reserve amount is still. So, we should be still in a very healthy place, and over time, we're gonna end up, end up getting that back. So then, what's next after this? By November 1st, I will provide everybody the preliminary, the actual preliminary budget, and this will be more in the final form of the budget document that, and we can review that, we'll review that at the November 7th meeting, and then between the November 7th and the November 14th, there shouldn't be any changes at all, and so then, I will save you from more boring presentation, at least at November 14th, and just ask you to adopt the budget, because I'll bore you at the November 7th one, and then answer any other questions you have at that meeting. But, with that, if.
My yawn wasn't for you, I've been up since four a.m., I'm sorry. Sorry. You're riveting.
Yeah, thanks.
If you were really upside down, then you wouldn't be yawning.
That's right. Absolutely.
Well, there was a lot of one-time requests, and, and definitely, we have to look at our budget, and we are gonna make our budget this year like we, we all sat here last year and adopted it, and. we all sat here last year and adopted it, and, and that's why you see, it was like a million something last year, and that's why we need to adjust it to the nine-hundred-and-seventy-five to make sure we are very fiscal responsible for, for our public, so that was something that, it was, it was tough to tell the departments that, but I believe that we all came through and picked the right projects when we were on the Finance Committee and gone through this process. It's quite a long process, uh, I never done it from the very beginning to the end, um, to be involved daily on this, but it's very good. It was tough for some of the departments, but I think it was understood, and so it's, we have to pick the ones that are the right projects for our city.
Uh, and I, and I'll say, like, like I do every year, um, working with the different departments, directors, and all, all the staff that end up touching the budget, um, it is just a great collaborative effort, and kind of like what Donald was saying, just with the teamwork that they've got, we have that in so many areas of the city. And this year, having a message to everybody that this is gonna be tight, tighter than, than a lot of us have, have, have seen since we've been working at the city. Um, the way that everybody was very reasonable about what they brought forward, uh, is very refreshing to see. And, um, yeah, and just being able to adopt a, a, a reasonable, a reasonable budget in, in the time of economic slowdown is, I think is a success for the city.
So I think the goal here is for people just to kind of take it, take it back and go through it, and if you have questions, then reach out to us.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, whether you've got questions tonight or, uh, over the next couple of weeks, or when I send out the preliminary budget. Um, yeah, just wanted to get it in front of council well before you see the final, the final budget document. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Oh, reports. Uh, Councilmember Atkinson, thank you for going to the, uh, Foothills Fest, uh, and I forget if it was thirty-six-hundred acres we preserved as the trust and the city of Wenatchee, or if it's four thousand, I can't remember that. Dave's not here to correct me. So I guess I can say whatever number, but that, that was a, a great event, and then, um, uh, that's part of the city, something that wasn't on the city was, uh, council member, you're on their board for, uh, Althea, which is a great organization for veterans and, uh, people with disabilities to connect with, uh, horses and, and, um, eventually, some will work, uh, for Althea. So that's a very, that was a cool event, the same, same day, a little busy. Uh, for me, I met with, uh, Laura and I met with Senator Short with his seventh district, 'cause as you know, everything's been changed, so very grateful for her, and she's got some, she's got some power, like most senators, and she's, it was a, it was, I enjoyed the, the connection with her, and that's what it comes down to, is the connection with the people, so when we go and I, I do our ass, and I actually had an ass there, and she's, boy, she's gonna take charge of it. So that was, that was very nice. Um, just one other thing is after tonight, uh, four, four city council meetings are left, believe it or not, uh, before the end of the year. Um, so start thinking a little bit about next year, what, what committees you might be interested in, and just kind of throw that out to you, so. So what's everybody else been up to? That's it for me.
I went to the PUD, and they're looking at, uh, their property, um, their, their, um, old admin building and, um, the reality of um, using that building, uh, uh, reuse is fading. They're having no results in, in getting someone to take that on, so they're looking at other options at this point, so. Went and listened to that. They have a lot of other things going on with staying up on technology, and, um, so they're having to do those things as well, but it was a good, good meeting. Uh, the Downtown Association, just retooling for their next year and budget conversations and, um, visioning for down there. Um, uh, so that's about it.
Any other council members?
For me. Got to see the, uh, new girls softball field, uh, and the mayor was there also, and that was fun, and, yeah, so.
That was impressive. I, I should give a, a shout-out, the, uh, they, they weren't gonna have this put together, and then I, I got contacted by, um, uh, Corey, uh, Calahar, the school superintendent, and and basically our staff went way beyond, and basically went to the contractor and said, hey, here's your list, you know you need to get this done, and the school district was there too, but it was so appreciative of, um, our staff and, and, um, the school superintendent, and there was some school board members there also that all came up to, I said thank you for allowing us to get to work, 'cause the big concern was the safety. And they really didn't have it put together, but they pushed hard for like the last four days, and, and, uh, our ci- city was out there uh, four times in one day, just so they could practice on Monday, so.
Yeah, it was their last home game, so they, they got one game there.
One game is, is incredible. Um, our city attorney's favorite part of the meeting, uh, if we could get a motion, um, to adjourn.
I was gonna say, or before you adjourn, you could sing Happy Birthday.
It is, it's a very special day today.
It is in the minutes.
I feel like it's necessary.
Special day, right?
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
City Administrator.
Happy birthday, dear Laura. Happy birthday to you.
Enjoy some cooking.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion and a second to adjourn is in favor.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Linda, for participating tonight. All who oppose, motion carries.